Go ahead and get tonight's meeting to order.
Oh, gosh. Okay, so you...
All right, do I?
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Agenda is adopted. Moving on to item three, approval of meeting minutes from our February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. Anyone have any changes?
I've got one, the bottom of our page four, which is two of five minutes. Third to the bottom sentence, just cross out the word "have" after that might have want someone. It's just a grammatical error.
What line number is that?
Third from the bottom and...
One thirty.
Yeah, one, right, one thirty.
Yours not at the left or something? Oh. Any other changes? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with one amendment.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Minutes are approved. And moving on, item four, we have a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a daycare center at forty-eight seventeen Viking Boulevard Northeast. Aaron?
Staff is requesting that Planning Commission hold a public hearing to consider the recommendation for a CUP to allow for a daycare center. Daycares are identified as a conditional use in the B-one limited business district. Bright Beginnings and Childcare, uh, Childcare and Learning Center is under contract to purchase the property located at forty-eight seventeen Viking Boulevard Northeast with the intent to convert the existing building into a daycare. The business owner, Rebecca Carr, is working with an architect to remove the separating wall in the building and do necessary renovations to the existing building to accommodate a daycare for up to seventy children. Staff has determined that this location has adequate parking in the existing lot for this use, and the two access points will allow for adequate flow of traffic during morning drop-off times. Daycares are highly regulated at the state and county levels. No additional regulations are required by the city code for operation of a daycare. Staff is requesting Planning Commission hold a public hearing and recommend approval to the city council for a CUP for a daycare center located at forty-eight seventeen Viking Boulevard, pin number twenty-four thirty-three twenty-three forty-four zero zero two one, with the conditions set forth in resolution twenty-two dash O X.
Thank you. Seeing as this is a public hearing at this time, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in regards to the conditional use permit within its parameters, please step forward, state your name and address. Seeing the long line forming, I'll then close the public hearing at this time. As a board, is there a motion to discuss or to not before getting into it?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two-two dash XX, resolution granting a conditional use permit for the daycare center located at forty-eight seventeen Viking Boulevard Northeast, pin number twenty-four dash thirty-three dash twenty-three dash forty-four dash zero zero twenty-one.
Motion, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Motion and a second, discussion? Anyone have any comments, questions, concerns?
The only question I had is, um, I know behind, I think this is really awesome that it's gonna go in, but behind the property I saw is a septic and well. So I know they need to have an outside play area for the kids. So I'm assuming they've probably already identified that on the side of the property, they have enough square footage for the number of kids that they wanna have?
Yep, and they will be installing a play area outside as well with fencing.
Okay, nice, thank you.
Any other discussion points? Hearing none. I'll go ahead and move to vote unless any other comments. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Uh, resolution twenty-two-two dash XX moves to city council at...
On the twenty?
Twenty-eighth? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Item five, public hearing for a variance to the ordinary high water level setback for one-nine-five-one-nine East Front Boulevard Northeast. Aaron?
Staff is requesting that Planning Commission hold a public hearing and consider recommendation for a variance request to allow for a reduction in the setback from the ordinary high water. The pro- this property is located in the CL Coon Lake zoning district. In two thousand and twenty-one, the property owner's place, the write-up says seventy-two, however, I did receive a correction, is fifty-four square foot storage shed, sixty feet from the ordinary high water level. Because the shed is less than two hundred square feet, the bu- a building permit was not required. The house meets the required seventy-five foot setback from the ordinary high water level. It should be noted that if the house had city sewer and water, it could be, the shed could be located fifty feet from the ordinary high water level. The front yard of the house is occupied by the driveway, garage, and a type-three or mound septic system. There is no space for the placement of a storage shed. The well is located on the lakeside a few feet east of the existing storage shed. The shed is surrounded by a mature pine tree and tall shrubs between the property fence and the shed, as shown on attachment four. The size of this property is comparable to all the lots on the, in the Coon Lake area, making the location in which the shed was installed the only reasonable location on the property. Consideration of a variance requires Planning Commission to consider a three-factor test for practical difficulties. The first factor is for reasonableness. In this case, a detached accessory structure for residential use is a reasonable use for residential property. City Code of Patent X-A, section fourteen dash four, A-one, states that all properties are allowed one shed of two hundred square feet or less. The second factor is that the landowner's problem is due to circumstances unique to the property and not caused by the landowner. In this case, due to the small lot size, location of the mound septic system, and the location of the well, there is no other location on the property to place the shed. The front yard of the property is the driveway and mound septic system. The east wall of the residence is at the seventy-five foot setback from Coon Lake. And the well is to the east of the paved patio in the rear yard. Between the well and the shed, there is a mature pine tree prohibiting the shed from being moved further from the ordinary high water of Coon Lake. The third factor is that a variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. This factor is used to consider whether the resulting structure will be out of scale, out of place, or otherwise inconsistent with the surrounding area. In this case, approval of this variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, as there are fifteen detached accessory structures and thirty-three residential structures along the lake with similar or smaller setbacks to the ordinary high water, which is illustrated on the left image. All of those blue properties contain a legally non-conforming structure. Staff has received complaints from the resident of the property to the north regarding the placement of the shed. The resident feels that the shed impedes her view of the lake. The view of the shed from her home is received by staff, and the email detailing the initial complaint can be seen in attachment six, which is the image on the right. City staff is requesting the Planning Commission hold a public hearing and recommend approval to city council for a variance for the setback reduction from the ordinary high water, with conditions as written in resolution twenty-two-two dash XX.
Thank you. As this is a public hearing, we will go ahead and open it at this time. Anybody who wishes to speak in regards to the variance, uh, relation to the shed, to the ordinary high water level setback condition only, please step forward, state your name and address. The podium. And for the record, I'll just note it that the resident is handing a couple of photos of her view in what looks like a fall or springtime without the vegetation.
My name is Tina Riley. I'm at one-nine-five-two-five East Front Boulevard Northeast. Um, I'm Dave's neighbor to the north. When he put up the frame for the shed and I could see what he was gonna do, I invited him over. I stood him in front of my living room window, and I showed him that the only space he left me to see the bay and the lake was from inside my house over the fence where the shed now stands. So, in order for me to see the bay and the big lake, I have to go down to the shoreline because his fence blocks my whole yard. I asked him to put the shed anywhere else but there. He's got an open space. He cut down a tree, a pine tree right between our houses, which it'd be perfect in. He's got a huge cement slab on the south side of his house, which he could put it on. He's got a four-car garage. He does not need his shed. I asked him to please put it anywhere but there and showed him exactly what he was blocking me from. He told me to just look the other way. Well, the other way is the end of the bay that's the end of the water, and it's all weeds. So it's a little bit different than the view I used to be able to see. So I called the city when he put it up, and Nick Schmitz came out to look at it and to take pictures. Nick told me there were no permits pulled for it, especially for the underground electricity that he had run to it. So Nick sent him a letter to remove it. So I'm just wondering why he still has it. I want it removed, put anywhere else in his yard. He's got a whole area to the south side, but then it would block his view. So I would like it removed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else have anything to say? Or wanna step forward? I do have a couple of emails I will read once everyone else who's in attendance has their opportunity to say anything if they'd like to. Okay. Hearing none other. While the public hearing is still open, I'll go ahead and read these emails. First is from, uh, David Hanson into the city. And it states, this email is being sent to you in support of our neighbors. We live next door at one-nine-five-one-one East Front Boulevard Northeast. This past year, they built a beautiful little shed lakeside in their backyard. It was just lovely and a great addition to their home. We find it pleasant to look at, as I'm sure you would as well. We have no issues with them or will, or with the way that they maintain their property. Sincerely, Dave and Jan Hanson. Second email from Jackie Jesse. Dear interested parties, we appreciated receiving the recent notice informing us of the public hearing, considering a setback variance from, for the ordinary high water line for the placement of the shed on the property located at one-nine-five-one-nine East Front Boulevard Northeast in East Bethel. We, Jesse L. Heron and Jackie J. Heron, owners of lake property at one-nine-five-four-one East Front Boulevard Northeast on the bay of Coon Lake, have walked the property of the neighbor to the north, uh, oh, excuse me, of their n- neighbor next door to the north, and have observed no obstructed view in regards to the shed when looking directly at the lake. We are writing to extend our full support for the shed remaining in its current location for this matter to be permanently res- resolved with the granting of a setback variance for the property's own CL Coon Lake with the PID number listed, respectfully submitted. Still seeing no one else approaching the podium unless they'd like to at this time. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. The public hearing now closed. Do we have a motion before discussion? In order to discuss that, I'll go ahead and make a motion for approval with the conditions as recommended by city staff for the approval of the city, city council for the variance of the setback reduction for the ordinary high water with conditions as written in resolution twenty-two dash XX.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Can, we'll start discussion.
Are we able to see if anything has been done regarding the electrical permit? And I know that was...
Could be the question to Aaron.
Yes.
Tina, I did see your hand raised. I'm assuming you wanted answers to your questions, and this is the por- portion where we would do that. We'll address that.
Well, I was gonna ask, shouldn't the permit in a variance be done before the shed's built or not after?
The shed itself does not require a permit. State Building Code and city ordinance only require a permit for sheds over the two hundred square feet. What? Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, and at this time, the public hearing is closed, so we're not gonna do too much of the back and forth, but we will address the questions that were asked as well. We have to have a motion before we can have the discussion to answer said questions. So, thank you. Aaron, I believe you were looking up on the...
I am looking. I do not see an electrical permit in here. However, all of our electrical permits are handled through a second-party inspector, so at this time, I don't have access to that right now. Uh, I can look into it and have that available for council. And I work...
Yep, Tina.
I do work closely with Nick, and this was addressed, but I have asked him many questions if there were any relevant things to this variance before the meeting, before he left today. And he did not have any complaints regarding this variance, so...
Is the owner here tonight?
The owner is here. I'm sure they'd be willing to make themselves available if you had any questions. Is there anything specific you'd like to ask?
Well, actually, the, the electrical is not relevant to our...
Variance. I know for me, one of the things I look at here is, you know, we, we see a lot of distance variances that come before us. You know, we recently had the converted accessory structure that was originally a storage container where they wanted it within six feet of their side yard um, for various reasons. Um, I always try to caution precedents that we set when we do this. I think it is pretty apparent by, I think it was at attachment five with all the blue lots showing, thank you, Aaron. The majority of the, of the house is just in that area on East Front Boulevard and Tri-Oak Circle and Viking Boulevard. It's a pretty common practice. That's been allowed, and other variances have been allowed for it. So I'd have a harder time not approving a variance for the high watermark in this situation. If the electrical is a concern and was put in without a permit, but if Nick's been out and hasn't expressed it, I'm sure we can still ask him to revisit it if it was an issue for the electrical portion only, but like Glenn pointed out, this is variance is for the high watermark, not for the electrical.
The sighting of this is not outside of his building footprint. Like, if you extend the lines at the edge of his house out toward the lake, it's within that rather than outside, like he's trying to put it up against the neighbor's area. It's actually in his own
Field of vision.
defined by the edges of his building, so I don't... And it's close. I mean, it has sixty-foot setback, but it's still pretty close to his house.
Yeah.
It's not a very large yard.
And he has to be cautious of the well in the, which is on the lakeside as well.
So I see nothing unreasonable about the placement of that.
Can I ask, is the, the fence, is that white line above the property line, the six-foot privacy fence that we're seeing in the photos here?
Correct.
And is that, um, is that the neighbor's fence?
Aerial photos can be up to two feet off. That is their fence.
Okay.
When I look at this plan, it looks like the fence creates the line of sight between the neighbor's house and the fence. The angle looks continuing. It's like the shed is within the fence part of that. It's not protruding farther in from any point. If you run an angle from the house, it hits the fence before it hits the shed.
I think it's, I think it's over the fences, like it in this photo.
Let's see, that's, oh, over the height.
Yeah, yep, yep. So, and I think, yeah.
But again, we don't have any, we don't have any precedents or ruling about
Right, no.
construction of view, unfortunately. In this case, it's again, about the high watermark, and that's one thing we need to make sure we stay focused on.
Right.
Any other discussion or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. This'll go before city council. Is that also at the twenty-eighth? Yes, of next month. And moving on to agenda item six, public hearing interim use permit, Star Dog Training LLC at two-one-zero-two-eight Rendova Street, Northeast. Aaron?
Staff is requesting that Planning Commission hold a public hearing and consider recommendation for an IUP to allow a home occupation for the operation of a dog training business. The applicant, Carrie Kreiner, is the owner of Star Dog Training LLC. This business is a dog training business with no boarding or kenneling services. Star Dog Training offers one-hour training group sessions of up to six dogs. Most sessions have on average four dogs. Star Dog Training also offers individual one-on-one sessions. The applicant has already begun the process of fencing in the yard in which, weather permitting, the training would take place. In the case of inclement weather, training would take place within the detached accessory structure on the property. Planned hours of operation are Monday through Friday from nine a.m. to nine p.m. to accommodate dog owners who work during the day to have access to pet training in evening hours. The applicant anticipates Friday hours to end at five p.m. most weeks. There is adequate off-street parking for anticipated class sizes on the existing driveway on the property. Staff is requesting the Planning Commission hold a public hearing and recommend approval to the city council for an IUP to allow the home occupation of operating a dog training business with the conditions set forth in the resolution.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for, to hear for the interim use permit for Star Dog Training. Anyone who has anything they'd like to say on the matter, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Don Johnson, Okinawa Street, twenty-year resident. I am on the street directly behind him. It's an awesome thing. You can live for twenty years and not meet your neighbors. I like it. That's why we moved here. I think it's a great idea what they're doing. So the hours, the fence, I, we've got dogs barking all the time, so a couple more isn't gonna bother us, and I think it's a good idea. I'm glad they're doing it, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Please speak into the microphone so the recording can hear you, please.
All right. My name's Gerald Gasek. I live at two-one-zero-six-three Okinawa, and I've been living in the residence right behind it, uh, just north adjacent or lots are kinda connected in the corners. And the thing about it is, uh, there's some concerns I have. First of all, I guess, let's start all with, uh, it looks like they might already have the permit because there've been advertising on the, uh, internet. Do they have the permit already? Can any a- anybody answer that?
Typically with the public hearing, we'll take the questions, and if we can address them, we will after the public hearing.
Okay. As far as, uh, the dog training, are we gonna have, like, vaccinated licenses? I don't see anything on the ordinances for dog training that they have to have from the city of East Bethel. But about aggressive breeds, they can bring any kind of dog in, you know, uh, rottweiler, bullmastiff, and there's no, uh, regulations from the city on that. Um, let's see. Are the training sessions gonna be solely on the property, or are they gonna walk the dogs around the block? That'd be another question I'd have. Uh, is there gonna be a limit of how many dogs are on there? I see some of their things that they're gonna do is, uh, according to their website, they have lake dog birthday parties, you know. Is there a limit of how many dogs they could have on the property at once? Are they gonna be required to have insurance? You know, in case anybody gets bit? Is it gonna be the city's responsibility? Is it gonna be the dog owners? Is it gonna be the Star Dog Training responsibility? And, uh, let's see, what else do I got on here? I believe that, uh, there's other issues that I have is if you have a dog training facility, these dogs aren't trained. You know, you're bringing in dogs that maybe have a problem with barking, or they have problems with, uh, you know, uh, aggressiveness, you know, that puts the people at risk in the residential, uh, areas. And, uh, property values tend to go down if you try to sell because a lot of people, young kids, they might not want to, uh, buy a house where you got somebody training dogs or dogs barking all the time. And, uh, let's see, you know, as far as I can see, I'd like to have the city go over their, uh, you know, requirements for dog permits or dog training permits.
Yep, and, and most of that is all listed in the permit process.
So, 'cause I, you know, I, I personally believe that, uh, you know, residential area should stay res- residential. We shouldn't have, you know, a bunch of businesses moving in. So this house has a welders here, and this house has a, you know, a tap, uh, room here, and this one, you know. People move out to their residence, so they have a, you know, nice quiet place instead of a business area. So, thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
My name is Deborah Zpersky. I'm at two-zero-nine-four-six Rendova Street, Northeast. We're three houses south of them. I wish them well in their business. My only concern is barking. I work at home full-time. I'm on Zoom meetings, I'm on phone, and I just, I can't do the dog barking. But other than that, if that can get under control, or if there's some way to measure that, I'm totally fine with their business. I'm just worried about my own. That's all.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Carrie, the dog owner, trainer. For the dogs barking, it's not coming from me. My neighbors have dogs that constantly bark when they're outside. I don't tolerate dog barking. My dogs are quiet unless someone's knocking at our door. I do hope to not have that issue. I don't have a whole lot of clients during the day. Um, there is one dog, and we are working really hard. I'm making it quiet. Um, she probably barks about four times, and then I'm limiting it. Um, if it continues, we will change the way we are training. Dogs are coming in and out of the building on leash. I don't really deal with too many aggression issues. If they do have aggression issues, I ask for them to be muzzled. They are not free roaming. I do have insurance for the building, uh, for my business. So if there's ever a, a bite issue, it's, if they come after me, I have insurance for that. My classes, I don't like to be the, I'm not trying to be a big Petco, PetSmart with a bunch of dogs in and out. I just wanna train away. I like to train to have nice house dogs, so you don't have the barking constantly. I'm not trying to make anybody's life hard. I'm trying to make everybody a little bit easier. And I feel like the smaller class sizes, um, is gonna make it a little bit more efficient, so I don't have too many comings and goings. Again, I'm trying to not make it a huge thing. I'm trying to be a little small mom-pop type thing. And if there is other issues, I would really appreciate someone coming to me so I can address them. I don't plan ever to have more than six dogs ever in a class. And they usually only go for an hour, forty-five minutes to an hour. There is parking that's gonna be on our property, so it's not affecting any of the flow of the traffic. I just do the basic agility and, um, obedient showing. As in for the parties and stuff like that, that's very small time. It's not gonna be a constant thing if I have yet to have anything like that happen. And I am trying not to disturb the peace too much. Um, I'm outside with my own dogs without having any classes, and I hear dogs barking all the time in the neighborhood. It's a very, very annoying habit. It's a very, very annoying habit, and if I could help everybody with the barking dogs, I would love to do that. Yes, we moved out from Coon Rapids to here to enjoy the quiet. I'm not trying to be insensitive. So, if there's any other questions, I'm here, ask them, if not, thank you.
Okay, thank you. You're next. No, please do.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Kurgel, and I live on, just off of Durant on two oh nine. I've been one of Carrie's clients, um, I've attended her dog training classes, and I can one hundred percent attest to her responsibility. She's very, very strict on having the dog on leash. When we entered the place, when we leave the place, there would never be any dogs just running loose outside. She's one of the reasons why my dog, I think, while my ne- why my neighbors are going to appreciate me and my dog more, because she's helping me getting my dog to a point where she can behave, and she wouldn't be barking or anything like that. There's no, she would never, like, raise her voice, there's no dogs barking, she would never allow any dogs to be aggressive, to run around loose in the neighborhood. I think this is a really good thing, I think this will offer really good service to our community, because it is incredibly difficult to find quality dog training anywhere, even, I don't think there's anything in our city. I think it will add a really, really good deal, um, to our community, and I will one hundred percent, um, support Carrie and the way she is, um, she's going to run her business. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in regards to the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time.
To address the question that you had about if she's already running the business, Carrie has been running a dog training business for years now, um, from a different location. Due to the pandemic, there, the other location that she was at had, you know, other requirements that encouraged Carrie to move to her property, so.
Is there, uh, say, for instance, is, are they gonna stay on her property?
Well, yeah.
You know, never be walked around the block or any of that?
Sure.
Because we got a park there, we got daycare too.
Yep, and we've, we've closed, closed the public hearing, if we need to reopen it, we will, and at that time, we'll have you come. We're gonna address the questions that you had asked earlier as well. What is this? Oh, your concerns? Thank you. I believe some of these questions have already been addressed with, with the business owner. Sounds like she's fairly open to answering and helping with, with any areas there. You know, again, insurance, vaccinations, those are all busi- you know, quality business practices. The city is not liable at this point, this would be the business owner from that perspective. Again, today is the public hearing for the approval of the number of dogs allowed for, for the kennel license on the property. And again, at this point, we open it up for a motion, or I'd entertain a motion for discussion.
There was one more question that he asked that I can answer.
Oh, please.
On his list. One of the conditions set forth in the resolution is that they are obligated to confine the dogs to the property by approvable means. In this case, it would be the fence and the leashing of the dogs while they go into the fence area. So, there, there won't be any dogs running, uh, dogs at large from this property.
And if there was issues and you felt you couldn't go to the business owner, you can reach to the city to file a formal complaint, and then that can be investigated from that point. That.
One of the other things that you'd mentioned was that you were concerned about the effect of your property value, and that's addressed in the resolution also, in saying that the hours of operation are within the city noise ordinance. And that the training class sizes are limited to a maximum of six dogs also, so it's not gonna get bigger, like this big business, like she was saying, maybe like a Petco.
Yeah. Yeah. Is there a motion for discussion?
I'll make a motion, uh, for a resolution granting an interim use permit for a home occupation located at two one zero two eight Rendova Street Northeast, pin number fourteen dash thirty-three dash twenty-three dash twenty-three dash zero 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 nine.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Now that we have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
Yes.
Please.
I hope you'll bear with me, I, I have multiple issues that I would like to, and they're, they're not issues, let me, let me take that back. But multiple items that I'd like to discuss with the planning commission. And we can take them one at a time, or I can list them all, and we can discuss them afterwards as needed. I, I, I don't, I don't think the gentleman's concerns are unreasonable, um, in, in, in asking the questions that he did, and I think a lot of those questions have been answered. I think one of the questions I have is related that there's going to be no more than six dogs that are not licensed with the city of East Bethel to this property, maybe on the property at any given time, meaning that the current owner's dogs are not included in the six dogs that would be allowed in the property for that training purpose. Which, again, I applaud you for doing training for dogs, I think that's very admirable. I think one of my concerns is that you talk about having hourly sessions, and your hours would be from nine AM to nine PM. So, my first concern is, um, will you be holding multiple sessions in a row? And the reason why I ask that is because, um, I don't really necessarily consider to be six cars, and I realize you have some people that are in your neighborhood who may not be using a car. But one of the concerns about home-based businesses is, is the increase in traffic having to do with the new home-based business. And if you have two in succession, that could now be twelve cars, six cars arriving, six cars leaving. So, my question is, are you going to, um, stagger out your training sessions in order to reduce that, that amount of cars at the same time? My other concern here is, um, is about, is about the, the, the hours of nine AM to nine PM. Again, I don't have a problem with the hours. What I do think should be up for discussion in the planning commission is whether or not those hours should be placed within the actual, um, resolution itself. In other words, stating the hours so that if there is an issue with, um, training going on until ten, eleven o'clock at night, and that there's an issue with noise or whatever, that that is something that, that, that the city could then address, um, which they probably wouldn't be able to do other than, um, uh, going by noise complaints, which are in the ordinances, there's, there's statements about, um, continuous loud noises from a particular property. Whether or not that should be included. I guess that's just the two things that I, I, I think that should be discussed with the planning commission. For me personally, I, I, I would like to include, um, the hours and limiting those between nine AM and nine, nine PM. Actually, I wouldn't even mind if you went from eight AM to nine PM, even though that, they don't intend to open until, till nine. But then my other concern is, is making sure that, you know, there's not that multiple, there's too much traffic for this. And then, I guess, my last item is whether or not, um, there should be a time limit on this interim use permit. Now, for an interim use permit, the city can either put on a, um, year, two years, three years to have it end at that period, so that the city could then relook at whether or not this permit is something that the city wants to continue.
A review process.
You're correct, and, um, the idea behind an interim use permit for home occupation, especially something like this, would be that, you know, eventually that type of business would move into a business location rather than in a residential neighborhood, especially if that business starts to grow, and they now need to expand that business. So, I am opening up or asking for comments or considerations on those items.
Can I ask, sorry?
Yeah.
About the, uh, you mentioned wanting to list the specific hours, um, in the resolution? Are they, are they, I tried looking up the city noise ordinance hours, and I didn't find a specific time, and perhaps I'm just.
Six AM to ten PM.
Okay. So, I mean, is it worth it to change that portion of the resolution?
Well, that, I guess, yeah, that was my, my thought with that, with that as well, is, you know, I, I understand the reasoning behind it. I'm just wondering if it is a moot point, because the city has our own noise ordinances, and that would affect it, or, you know, that this business would affect it? Would it need to be in there? Because it's already in the city's noise ordinance.
I was incorrect, seven AM to ten PM, sorry.
Thank you.
I guess my reasoning for, for that was not just for the noise, but also for the traffic that would be involved during those hours.
Sure.
Again, I, I'm not, I'm not hard and fast to that.
No, no, it's a discussion point.
I'm just merely pointing out that maybe that should be included.
Yep, I just didn't, I, I guess, to me, it was a question if it's a redundancy from what the city, that's the part I'm trying to think through on it. I know to your point on the staggering of the cars, one could also say that the same, you could use the same argument for the number of dogs as well. You know, if she's ending a session, if, if you're, if you're talking about back-to-back hour-long sessions, and you've got six that are getting ready to leave, and six that are showing up, you now also have twelve dogs on the property as well, in addition to twelve cars at maximum. So, I see, I see your point on that. I know, do you know what, how long are the sessions running, if I can?
They're about an hour.
One hour, okay. Do you plan on running them consecutively?
Yes, and if there is an issue with having too many cars, I will definitely stay here, start training.
Leave like a half-hour gap between?
Yeah.
Or something.
Whatever it takes. Yeah, I, the last thing I need is having dog competition.
Yep, that, that, that's what I pictured, in, in addition to the additional traffic that Randy brought up, I, that's what I also see, you know, I've brought my dog to trainers in the past too, and, and it is, you've gotta, you gotta rush the cars coming in, you gotta rush the cars going out, and then you also have the rush of, of the animals as well, so.
Yeah, and I don't, I mean, it'd be great if I get six dogs back-to-back.
Sure.
And if, my ultimate goal is I do open my house, and I have to, if I become that big, I will definitely look at a different location. But I don't.
Thank you.
I would just say that, that my biggest concern also is that the number of cars in the driveway doesn't look like there's, you know, room for six more cars there, much less twelve.
With the, you know, the length in there, getting to the detached, as far as the turnaround and getting them all, you know, all in and out at once, I could see that being difficult. I mean, I, I could see putting in there something about having appointments staggered to not allow for that, but again, that case, kinda goes back to the time thing, does it become a moot point of, because you have them back-to-back, at that point, you're out of compliance with your IUP, or IUP, if, if you have the twelve cars and the twelve dogs, and if that was the case, again, hopefully the neighborhood would voice a concern if there was one.
What is the, uh, the maximum number of cars that an ordinance, that a ordinance allows on a property for, like, the homeowners? Is it five?
Consistently, it's five.
Okay. So, there's nothing in there about if you have?
If, with an IUP, you can have more.
Okay.
So, it would allow for that.
I guess I, I don't see any issue, Randy, to your third point, I don't, I guess I don't see any issue with putting a, a time limit for renewal of IUP for review? Suppose a couple of years would probably be simple enough, make sure, voice any concerns, or see how the business grows and develops.
Typically, three years.
Three.
We do IUPs for.
That's what I thought.
In thinking of, if I, if this were my next-door neighbor, probably my only concern would be if the noise were an issue, especially extending into the evening hours, because it's reasonable to expect that you come home from work and you could have a nice quiet evening at your home. So, we have the sense that that's not gonna be an issue based on testimony from other people and the business owner. But I'm just wondering what, let's say that it were an issue, and what would be the redress that the city would offer in such a circumstance?
Uh, as with all of our IUPs, if there were ever any concerns, we always welcome them to call city staff, uh, my, my number or nick, and we would address it with the IUP owner to ensure that actions were taken. So, typically with IUPs, we do address it with them directly if we have a phone number or email address. Initially, if it, if we continue to get complaints, then it goes, starts going through the code enforcement process. If a notice does not address the problem, then it would end up going to city council for revocation. We've never gotten to that point as long as I've worked here. I don't even know of any IUPs that have not been approved for renewal by council after they've been initially granted, so. That, that's to answer your question about the expiration date. Since I started, we typically have not put them on there. I know that previous staff had, but we haven't in the, the three and a half years that I've been here almost had any issues with the IUP owners that couldn't be addressed by the conditions, and that's why the expiration dates have kind of not, well, have not been placed on the resolutions. Because the, the conditions in themselves, if we're having issues with a property, would be what allows the city to address that.
This doesn't, these conditions don't state anything about noise specifically?
Because that's addressed in the ordinance itself.
Right, but the noise ordinance goes to ten, I think it, if it's after ten o'clock, that's when it kicks in, so that wouldn't be an issue from the noise ordinance standpoint. That's, so I'm suggesting maybe add something about that in the conditions here.
Would you mean more about the level of noise versus the timeframe of it?
Well, there are broad statements in, in the conditions, like general welfare, public health, safety, so that it won't be injurious to the surrounding neighborhood or otherwise harm the public health, safety, or general welfare. So, maybe add, um, or exceed reasonable levels of noise. Because, I mean, other neighbors have dogs that bark, so there's a certain expectation of what that's gonna be. But if you had, you know, a bunch of, you know, it doesn't sound like that's gonna be the case in this business, but if that were, and a resident was suffering from that, you know, I'm just saying there's, should be probably something to give assurances. That's all I had.
I am curious about the fence. Is it around the entire property or in a specific area where they're going to be training the dogs? And then it's in completely enclosed versus like the whole property where maybe the driveway isn't?
Yeah, if you want to step up, we'll let you address into the microphone. And then if we have any other questions while she's up here.
It is going to be from the left part of the driveway.
So it'll be in the front yard?
Yep, it's being fully enclosed, we are saving up our pennies to do the whole yard, it's, it's not cheap. But we intentionally eventually want to do our whole property fenced in, but we're just going to start with the first front corner, and that's what I would train in. And again, they would be leashed in, going into the fence. And I probably would even have most of them leashed inside the fence until I can fully trust them to be left off-leash.
So let me, let me, let me understand this again, from what you just said. You are going to put the training area and fence in the front yard, is that correct?
The main part of my training is going to be inside the building, once in a while, we would like to train in the front yard for a little bit of it.
Right, so, but you, you were saying that you're going to fence the front yard, correct?
Correct.
So my concern there would be that you would have to get, and I don't know if this has been addressed by staff, is that you would have to get a variance to have that fence more than, I believe it's three feet tall. Is it four feet?
She, I've already, she, this property is not required to have a fence permit, however, this application came in at the same time that a fence permit was being a, she had brought in the permit for a four-foot fence in the front yard of this property. From what I understand, that's the intention, is a four-foot fence, which does not exceed the requirement, or does not exceed the ordinance. She's allowed to have a four-foot fence there.
Okay, I mean, because that was my concern is, you know, we've dealt with fences before, and that was one of the issues, is that when you have a fence that is in front of the home, that there is a limit as to how high that fence can be.
And she does not exceed that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So as for the, for the noise ordinance, I agree that is a concern. And one of, one of the concerns is, is that when the city is trying to enforce that type of regulation, I, I believe the regulation states that the noise has to be consistent, and it has to be verifiable. So in other words, if, if you're having those noise issues, it's very difficult to get that established with a barking dog. And I've experienced this, experienced this multiple times before, where even if the dog is barking for a couple hours, and then it doesn't bark anymore, I mean, you literally have to have someone come out, measure the noise, and verify that, that that's the case even after somebody hears it. So it's really kind of difficult.
And you'd have to verify that it's that property.
And that it's that property, correct.
As we've already heard from, from neighbors already, that there's already barking dog concerns in the neighborhood. So it would be hard to have, it'd be hard to say that it's specifically that property without that being verified.
Correct. Aaron, you, you mentioned that the city has not refused any IUP.
In the time that I've worked here, I've never seen an IUP renewal be denied.
Correct. So was there any, dur- during those renewals that you have witnessed, was there any changes to any of those renewals when those renewals happened, or were they just a rubber stamp of what was previously?
Were there new conditions put in, is what you're asking?
That's what I'm asking. Or even some that are taken away?
There was one IUP in which the verbiage was changed at request of the city attorney. However, it did not change the intent, it was just changing the wordage that was used. Other than that, as far as I'm aware, there have been no IUP renewals with additional conditions placed on the IUP. Typically, the property owners who come in for IUPs are the ones who are looking to follow the rules and will follow the conditions that are set for them.
I'm going back to what the owner said about, you know, barking dogs, that's part of what's being trained out of them. And I think she stated, you know, four barks is like her limit, like, that's, you know, you, you can't really even train other dogs when you got one that's yipping over, you know, so I mean, as far as aggression, she said about muzzling, well, I'm sure there's a muzzle for barking, you know, it's, it's, yeah, I think that's probably addressed.
Yep. Any other points, is there an amendment to the motion on the floor, or?
Well, I will offer an amendment to the original motion that a three-year limit be placed on the IUP for review. Again, I don't, I don't anticipate any issues, but, you know, if there is maybe that
Can be addressed.
At that time, that there would be a change of hours or, or some other issue that, that could be addressed in that fashion, that it could be done at that point. And my feeling is, if, if after that three years, that there is no other changes, at that point, I would say, remove the three years, at that point, we've, we've established a business in that location.
So the amendment is to include a three-year limit for, to renew, and at that time, if no new conditions, to remove said limit?
Yeah, I would just, I would just put it as a three-year review of, of the, of the IUP.
Yeah, but then you said to remove it after that? After the one renewed?
I think, I think that could be addressed within three years, I don't want to make that part of the amendment.
That's what I started figuring out.
Yeah, no, I, that's my amendment, flat out, is three years.
Is there a financial impact in doing that?
Real quick, is there a second to the amendment?
I will second.
Thank you, Gabriel.
To answer your question, renewals have a fifty, it's a fifty dollar application fee.
There's no more discussion. Call for a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. And this will go before council also on the twenty eighth?
Was that vote for the amendment or was it for the?
I'm sorry, that was the vote for the se, for the amendment.
Should have been the amendment.
Yeah, to the, for the amendment. And now we need to vote on the original motion for the resolution.
If you're going to close the discussion.
I haven't heard any further discussion.
It's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion with amendment carries.
I wish you the best of luck, I, I really would like to see you succeed.
Let's move on to council report. Councilmember Mundell.
Good evening, planning commission members. I'm Brian Mundell, your city council liaison. Not a whole lot for you this evening, we've only had one meeting since we've last seen each other. Couple items to note. Plans and specs were approved and directed to be sent out for bidding for the one hundred first street reconstruction. This is on the south side from Jackson Street to Highway sixty-five, just north of Acapulco. As that road is a border road with Ham Lake, this will be a joint effort between both cities, and the cost will be split between both cities. All the other really big items to note, we talked about a couple water management organization items. Twenty twenty-three Upper Rim River budget was approved, or at least East Bethel's portion. April twenty-first, we have our Springtown Town Hall meeting, starts at six PM, I invite everybody come out, all residents come out, we'll have an informal meeting, get together, coffee, cookies. Get together, talk with any planning members that come up, any, any, usually all commission, council members are there, city staff is there. Usually the sheriff's department makes an appearance, the fire department, Mendot has been there in the past. So if you have questions, come out informally and ask, and then we'll have a infor, a formal session in the chambers for other Q and A. And it's not too early, start talking about Booster Day. It's one of the favorite times of the year in East Bethel. Booster Day will be on July sixteenth right now. Plans are coming together and being formalized right now. Sounds like we'll have a little bit of a different format versus where we started early in the morning and went for most of the day. We will actually be starting in the afternoon. I will have an afternoon parade, I, I don't want to say the time yet because I don't know it off the top of my head, but it'll be in the afternoon, and then there will be, I believe, a band and other events, and then there will be fireworks. So mark that down on your calendars right now and invite your neighbors, invite your friends. And I'll be there, there will be a car show too. That's all I have, unless you have any questions of me?
No, great, thank you for the update.
Absolutely, I'll see you in a month.
See you then.
Thank you, sir.
Any other business before we adjourn? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved, being adjourned.